And the first item is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no approval of minutes. And the next item would be acceptance of the agenda. I just want to point out that late yesterday, early today, we did give you under new business naming of the Route 17 recreational park complex, which will be included under new business this evening.
Can I make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
Thank you. Jim, is there a second?
And I'll second it. Lou Paire?
Seconded by Lou Paire. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before we go into a student project tonight, I wanted to give a brief update on the COVID-19. Last count, when I checked the numbers tonight, we did have an increase in the number of positive cases in Portland. There are 34 confirmed COVID-19 cases in the town of Portland. And the number of people that have lost their lives increased to the number eight. And it's of great concern to us. We need to continue our vigilance and our strong social distancing, as well as washing our hands. I brought my mask tonight. When I am close to people within six feet, I will be wearing the mask. At this point, it's just me. And David and Kevin are here, but they're about 12 feet away from me, so I'm not in need of the mask tonight. I wanted to have a moment of silence for our neighbors and friends who lost their lives to this terrible virus disease. A moment of silence, please. This is by no means over. There's quite a bit more to this disease. And in listening to a call that we had with the governor at 5:00 today, one of the focuses of the conversation had to do with skilled nursing facilities and nursing homes. And it ravaged many nursing homes throughout our state. And it's of great concern to us. It's something that I'll be following up with our public health director about. And it's of grave concern. So as we get more information, I'll certainly provide it to you. But it is really a very, very difficult time for many, many of our families. I do not know, other than the governor has said, schools would open May 20. The town will follow that as well. I'm not certain that's the last that we will hear in terms of a date, but we'll stay tuned to that. The other item under communications and correspondence is we have some good news in the midst of this crisis. One of our high school students is working on a very special project in that he is working to produce some personal protective equipment for Portland residents and workers. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. O'Reilly. I think we may have a demonstration, if that's available tonight. So I'll turn it over to you, Philip.
Sure. So Kevin, I'd like you to make sure that both Bryce and Nate DeSalvo have access to speak. And I'm just going to give you a very brief introduction. Probably about two weeks ago, I received an email from Bryce White-Cricus. Bryce is a very talented junior at Portland High School who had a great concern about the health and welfare of his fellow townspeople and wanted to work to design a personal protective piece of equipment, a face mask that could be used by people at the grocery store, that could be used by town workers, that perhaps might even be used by our emergency medical personnel. Seeking then, he also sought the assistance of teacher Esha Murphy, who was part of our engineering and design project Lead the Way course. And he sought the assistance, the technical assistance of fellow junior Nick DeSalvo. And throughout the last two weeks, we have been working together. There's Bryce right there. We've been working together to see how, to bring this dream of his to fruition. He had a very simple request of me, and that was to use our specialized printers. And we, with the help of Carl and Linda, moved the printers to his basement. And the 3D printers are now clicking away at a rapid pace every day making these masks. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bryce, who is right there, and then also Nick DeSalvo. Nick, if you wanted to say hi, I think your picture will come in so that people know who you are.
Welcome.
All right, Bryce, take it away.
All right. Hello, everyone.
Hello. Good evening.
I am a junior at Portland High School, and I came up with the idea for this project. Here's an example of one of the masks that we've created. So we have the elastic straps to hold it on your face, a seal, and a filter. The other, my colleague Nate DeSalvo, he's helped me a lot with this as a technician. We've seen a lot of interesting issues with the printers over time, but we've sorted those out and made this as smooth as possible. So I'll start with the why for this project. Well, I saw a problem affecting everyone across the board, across the world. And late March, we really noticed the serious, really realized the seriousness of coronavirus and how it was really impacting the lives of people. And I wanted to test my leadership skills to protect our community. I realized that there was a lack of masks. And I thought to myself, how may I help? Well, I realized that there are 3D printers at the school. And once I created a design for these masks, I reached out to Dr. O'Reilly, Mrs. Lawson, and Mr. Murphy to get approval, bring the printers to my house, which ended up coming to fruition from the help of Mr. Toussaint, who brought them to my house. We all wore masks to make sure that we were safe through that transfer. And then we started printing with the help of Nate. There are four parts to this mask. So there will be the retainer that holds the filter, the filter itself, which I'm just using a coffee filter as an example for now. But I'll go into detail if necessary to speak about the different types. The outer covering, and then the elastic straps to hold it to your head. We are self-fundraising this project for all the materials. The outer covering and retainer are already in mass production. I will bring you over to see. Okay. So now that you saw what the masks look like, I'll answer the question, why use these masks? Well, these masks will be safer than a cotton bandana or a scarf. We are intending to utilize a filter that filters out micro particles. And we're looking at a derivative from the N95 surgical masks, which will be arriving in a shipment this week. It will also be more convenient than making your own mask. You can hand these out to people. One person can have this mask and use it as much as they want. And with convenience comes, it's easier to clean. So you just use soap and water to clean the outside of the mask and rubbing alcohol to clean the filter. This is all working towards a broader plan where it's a work in progress. So the design will evolve over the course of this project to reflect our feedback. We're hoping to do a trial run with a targeted group, such as the road crew, in the coming week or so. And sooner than later, we're intending to get these out to specific groups that'll be exposed the most, such as workers at Adams Grocery Store or nursing home workers. And using connections that I have through an organization called the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Organization, which I attended their World Leadership Congress in the summer of 2019. I will share out on a national level what we're doing and have schools across the country hear this once the kinks are ironed out and we have a solid plan. And I thought, you know, why not use the existing technology and make an impact? So that's a little bit about what I'm doing.
I'll open it up for questions.
Bryce, this is Mike Pell. How long does it take to make a mask?
The largest mask, so we have three different sizes, adult large, adult medium, and adult small. The largest mask takes roughly 3 hours and 15 minutes per printer. We have five printers, which are going right now. So we can make, if I have the printers going for roughly 12 hours a day, I could make probably 12 to 16 masks a day.
So part of our success, Mike, has been the man behind the scene, and that's Nate DeSalvo, who's been the support. So I wanted to shout out to him. I refer to him as Nick. My apologies. It's Nate DeSalvo. And Nate, do you have anything to say?
Well, not really. I think Bryce covered most of the bases as far as how the masks function and filtration, all that. I think that's everything.
If there are any technical questions, definitely ask Nate. Organizational questions would go to me.
Oh, Bryce, this is Ralph. And I have a question for you. I know you talked about sharing it or having, reaching out to the Hugh O'Brien group. So is your intent to share your 3D design documents with them so they could print the same thing?
Yeah. So the good thing with the 3D design is that you can use sort of universal software so that different types of printers that take different software, you can convert the files very easily. With that package that I would have schools use or individuals use, it would come with directions of how to put the mask together, instructions as to the software, how to, you know, make it work, pricing, all of that.
There we go. Good job.
Bryce?
Bob?
Yeah. So first and foremost, thank you both. This is some tremendous work that you're doing, especially at your age, which is, you know, as an engineer myself, that's pretty remarkable. I didn't even think about doing that at your age. So I can't thank you enough for taking the time to even think about, you know, moving in this direction. But on a public safety side, as you know, or may not know, I'm your fire chief. So we're running into a number of problems being able to protect our members. We are in pretty good shape now, luckily, but unfortunately, the numbers that Susan has been mentioning, you know, we've been getting busier, you know, by the day. And our supplies are extremely limited. And I'm sure that's one of the reasons why, you know, you started this whole process. So thank you for that. So the only question that I have is, these devices look like they'd be something that would be very good for us simply because it looks like we'd just be able to either wash or just replace the filters. And that's something that would be very beneficial to our service because right now, we're in a, basically, consumable industry where we're using our masks and we're having to throw them away. And unfortunately, we're not be able, we're not able to replace them because the stock is nationally so low. So this is something that I'm very interested in. In public safety and what we do as far as emergency response, we'll need that close to, if not equal to, the N95 micro because of our proximity of, you know, what we're doing to care for those that are sick or injured. So I'm very interested in the filtering that you plan on using for these. And I'm certainly interested to see what the byproducts. I mean, if it's something that's a hard filtering surface that you're saying we can clean with alcohol and reuse, that's even better. But if it's a situation where we can buy the device and really give it to a device to each one of our EMS staff in the future, and then all we have to do is provide filters to replace those, that's even better. So hats off to you both, and thanks for the great work. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bryce.
Just on the lines of the filters, we've been experimenting with a few different types. One of the ideas was using HEPA-13 because it's almost as good as the N95 material. We're going to be testing vacuum, like the ones from vacuum bags soon. That shipment should be coming in, I think, tomorrow. And another one, another filter that we're using would be the filter from reusable grocery bags. But we found out that those were actually what they use in N95 masks. So we are going to see how those might work, how we might utilize those. If those don't work out, another solution that we might have would be using two layers of cloth and perhaps like a coffee filter in between. But as the situation evolves and the need to these grows, we will try to do our best to match that.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks so much.
So just one side thing on the filtration is you might be thinking that like the reusable bag seems like kind of an unreliable method. And it's called non-woven polypropylene mesh, which is very fine cloth that is widely available in a lot of different materials. And you can buy in like large bulk quite cheaply. And it's actually what is used in like surgical masks that Ms. Bransfield showed when she had her mask. It's the same material as that.
It's fascinating. I would never think that would be an effective filter. Quite interesting.
So when people are asking you what our students are doing at home, you can tell them that what these two students are doing?
It's remarkable work. I am very, very impressed. And thank you for coming and explaining it to me in particular. It's not something I'm familiar with. And I'm quite proud of you and proud to say that you are students of our high school. It's not just that you're intelligent and capable, but you're using your talents to help people. And I can tell you, from receiving the bad news on a daily basis, to know that you're there to help people is remarkable. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to say the same thing, where thank you guys for that work. Same thing with Bob. I have an engineering background. And they didn't teach us this stuff in school. You know, college, let alone high school. So kudos for that work. And one of the questions I did have is you mentioned that you're raising funds for this. Did you want to tell folks how you're raising funds? At least let people know where they can reach out to you or how they can help support you in the work you're doing to support the community?
So on the lines of fundraising, we don't have a specific fundraiser set in stone right now. That will come relatively soon. We're thinking either the lines of a GoFundMe or a similar type. We can definitely let you guys know when that fundraiser's out.
Yeah, please do.
Definitely. Yeah. And through you, Dr. O'Reilly, if we could have follow-ups on this wonderful project, we would very much appreciate that. We want to give as much support as we can and certainly are very, as I said, very proud of you and the work that you're doing to help everyone.
Thank you for your recognition, Susan. I want to add, Bob had said something about purchasing these masks. The boys aren't selling them. The boys' intent is to give them to their neighbors and their workers in town.
Thank you very much.
And I will say, Bryce and Nate, I've been part of the discussions in the morning with the school and heard about your progress. And I've been sharing your story whenever I have conversations about what's going on around town. So I'm pretty, I'm really impressed with you guys. And I've been sharing your success as I get the chance.
We look forward to hearing more from you. Please come back and visit.
We will. 100%.
All right.
Well done.
Good night. Thank you.
Nice job.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment, Kevin?
Sharon Peters said that impressive work. Proud to see our students stepping up for the community. And I also have a comment from Witchy. I don't have a first name. Congratulations to Bryce and Nate. You're so articulate and make your community so proud. And I just want to make a note while I have the floor. If you do want to participate in public comment and you do have a microphone, we're happy to open that up for you. Just please state your name and address in the chat, and we'll go ahead and open that up during public comment.
Thank you, Kevin. We're going to move on in our agenda to old business, and letter A is action on the supplemental appropriation for the capital plan improvements. And we are able to do this because Governor Lamont issued an executive order by the number 7, S as in Sam. And it allows us, as a municipality, to not follow the charter requirement, which would be, in addition to a public hearing, a town meeting vote to determine a supplemental appropriation. But because we are given the authority under the executive order due to the COVID-19 situation, emergency that we have, we are allowed to make the supplemental appropriation by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, provided it is something that is of utmost need for our town and delay would cause undue harm to the town. So that is why we're bringing it forward to you. We did have a public hearing at 7:00 tonight and had some information in detail on this supplemental appropriation. There were no comments that were received, and I did not receive any written comments, at least to my knowledge. Did not. I do get quite a few emails every day, but I did not. And I scoured as best I could. I did not see any public comment. So I will open it up for discussion with the Board of Selectmen.
So I'd like to just make a couple of comments upfront. I know that we've looked at this list. You know, I know we've looked at this list a number of times. I think all the items are extremely critical. And I stated at previous discussions about these items that I've been part of Long Range Capital discussions for a number of years now. And these are not brand-new items. Pretty much all of them have appeared on Long Range Capital lists along the way. So they're not brand-new items. So, you know, I know that there was some chatter on the Portland Facebook site about, you know, being diligent in how we use our funds. These, I think these are diligent items. These are things that are really critical. I mean, the only one I can't really speak to is probably about the police cruisers because I don't have as much detail. But I think with regards to the rest of them, I pretty much understand the situation. And I think they're extremely critical. Regardless, I realize there's a big unknown of what's coming for us. But these are extremely critical items.
Thank you, Ralph.
Susan, Mike Hernandez?
Yes, Mike.
Are we voting on these as a slate or itemized?
Typically, we would vote on it on all of them unless there are amendments to the resolution. The resolution was shared with you by email, and you have two. You have one with the $600,000 figure and then the change to the $610,000, which is a minor amount, but it is certainly something that we ask for your consideration on.
Okay, thank you.
You may have heard me read the public hearing notice. If anyone wants me to repeat the resolution, it's pretty much the same language as was in the public hearing notification. Do you want me to read it again?
No, I'm clear.
Yeah, I mean, I think from where, looking at these, I would support, you know, going forward, the list as presented with the $610,000, adding the extra $10,000 so we can do the sidewalks, fully do the engineering. I think that's just, that's good business. I think the fact that this was really being allowed, you know, there's some, I'm pleased to see the management that allowed us to have the surplus from the last budget in order to be able to do this as opposed to having to tack it on to this year's capital budget. I know last year, with some of the tough decisions we had to make going down to a net zero budget, you know, we had to take one of the two cruisers out that we were trying to replace them. So we're a little bit out of cycle. So I think being able to add the cruisers, another cruiser back in, that helps us get us back on track. And especially now with the loss of another cruiser, that's important. The upgrades here for the fire department, they need the scuba bottles. The dump truck, that's something we need to get moving now if we're going to have it for the winter. Because I understand that those things take a while to get ordered and get in. The salt shed, I mean, sitting on the water and soil committee, we know that work has to get completed because that's something from a deep standpoint. They need to see us to complete that work. So I mean, I'm good with the list as presented at the $610,000 level.
Anyone else?
Susan, Lou Paire?
Yes, Lou.
I think I'd like to leave it at the $600,000 versus the $610,000. I know that's a lot of, not a lot of money. But it seems like there may be some wiggle room within the budget. So my proposal or maybe amendment to this supplemental account resolution would be to put $30,000 in for the sidewalk, but then reduce some of the others to adjust accordingly. And I think you had said that there are some, maybe some wiggle room with the salt shed possibly. And possibly, there may be some wiggle room with the police cars. One question I had on top of the, or about the cars is that if there's three cars that are fairly old, are they going to be traded in? And is there any value to the trade-in? I understand that they're pretty old and pretty beat up. So maybe there's not too much money you can get from those trade-ins. But if in fact, there's some wiggle room within that $600,000, if we can make the sidewalks $30,000 instead of $20, but then adjust the others accordingly and maybe leave that up to you and Tom to figure out which ones could be adjusted.
You would have to make those changes tonight, Lou, because we have to keep to those amounts within these line items. So I would ask Bob Shade if he would comment to that question.
So the dump truck, the police cruisers, the mower, and I think most of the bids that might be on the heist, the maintenance program as far as the furnace and related HVAC and safety stuff, those are all pretty firm bids. We did our, we vetted our, as far as the dump truck is concerned, three separate bids. State bid prices on them all, they all participate. And we've, obviously, we'd be going with the lowest bid and the best price. Those are the numbers. Those are the numbers that you got. There's not much wiggle room on those. We thought hard on the salt shed. And we're, we don't even have a bid out yet. So we're hoping that the bids come back where we think they're going to come back. But then again, you know, everybody's engineers differently, contractors certainly quote differently. We've been surprised before. So the $50,000 that we're looking for gives us what we think we may need based on what we're getting back on prices of material and stuff based on the scope of the project. So that's how we came up with that. I don't even know if that's enough, but we think that that's going to get us to where we need to be. Same thing with police vehicles. I mean, again, I'm not going to speak for Captain Malardo, but knowing the vehicle prices, state bid as well, pretty firm pricing. And as far as selling the used vehicles, we give very little money for those. And we have reused And we have reused that money to buy equipment, meaning emergency lighting and radio installations to pay for that for the new cruisers. So whatever money comes out of the sales of those, or not trades, but sale of those vehicles that we, I know the finance department does a really good job on selling used vehicles in town. And we repurpose that money very efficiently. And one of the ways that that's done and it stays in that department is to supply those new vehicles with the equipment they need for their sirens and emergency warning lights and, and communication equipment too.
And we do auction them on govdeals.com. So those dollars, any residual dollars would be brought back. We also would take a vehicle that has more life in it, maybe not as a police vehicle, but as a public works, extra car, or sometimes Dave Kozminski has a car that he needs. I'm looking at him. So those police vehicles are recycled, if you would. And then the one that might be already an old police vehicle would be the one that would go to the auction block. So there is a very good system that Tom Robinson has put together for us in auctioning surplus equipment and Kevin Armstrong helps with that. So that's a good point. There, there is other dollars that come, Lou, from those vehicles.
Question for Susan or Bob. Did, I can't recall, did we buy any new cruisers last year? And, and are we projecting to buy any in the budget we're going to be working on?
There was one purchased or there was one allocated for this year. I'm not certain that it's come in yet. Has it come in yet, Bob? The one that was for fiscal year 20?
No, it has not come in from Ford yet from fiscal year 20. And remember, we, we lost a few too due to some accidents that we unfortunately had. And those vehicles were replaced, but that just replaced an inline vehicle that was maybe a few years old that was damaged. So, you know, the, the most recent accident really plays havoc on the, the number of vehicles that are available. And like I said, you know, we could be at a point right now where we're actually sharing one. I'm not sure.
So to answer your question, there was one vehicle budgeted for fiscal year 2020. Within the proposed budget for 2021, there is no police vehicle in that budget. It would be in this supplemental appropriation.
Okay, well, is, I'll just, I'll just weigh in because I've been commenting to the other selectmen about, you know, that we should be very careful how we spend money, given especially the prices we're in. But given what I've heard tonight, I'm, I think these items are well justified. And being that you've, you know, it's, it's money that we, that we have from the previous budget. I'm basically okay with the, the spend. And I, I know Lou's trying to keep it to 600,000, which is admirable, but I, I don't know. I mean, the, the other 10,000, if it, if it's just not to be, be had, I'm pretty confident with what you've said, Susan, and how, you know, you and Tom run the finances for the town and Bob Shade, that if, if there is savings to be had or we get money back from the cruisers that we trade in, that, that money's, you know, that we can maybe make up the extra $10,000 or that any savings that you guys can come up with, that I'm pretty confident you're going to act in the best interests of the town. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
We would strive to not spend the total amount, Lou. So while the 610,000 may be allocated, that doesn't mean that's all going to be spent. And I think that's important for this board to keep tabs on and to ask us, and we certainly will be certain to give you how these bids come in and hopefully they're favorable. But we can't promise. And the process for coming back to you does become somewhat difficult. So if the pleasure of the board is to go and keep the 600,000, we'll work with you on that tonight. If the pleasure of the board is to go to the 610,000, we'll be certain that wherever we spend the money, it would be spent the best way that we can with the minimal amounts. So again, I'll open it up for more discussion on that.
I mean, I, again, I guess I'll, I'll stay right, kind of where I was in that. Given that we know that the surplus was in that 630 to 640,000 range, and given that some of this is making up for where we've lost vehicles and equipment. Again, I'm, I'm comfortable with the 610,000, knowing that, you know, I'd rather make sure that we've got enough to get the equipment that we need, knowing that the, any opportunities for savings will result in that, you know, that money not being spent.
Michael Hernandez, you are lit. No?
Yeah. I'd make one last comment. I think it's interesting because if anyone's had to deal with getting funds for something in town and had to deal with Tom, you know that he is going to be diligent down to the penny. So I am sure that if there's a, we, means to save on this list, Tom will certainly find a way.
Well, that's, that's good because I do think we, we, not that it's a different issue, but we could be facing a revenue problem down the road. Things economically don't rebound as everybody's hoping they're going to rebound. But I guess that's, that's a whole different conversation and
Yeah, and I, and I certainly agree. I know that I looked at the budget again today and I certainly look at spending of, of the supplemental appropriation. I don't want to spend this money. If we don't have to, it's not something that I want to spend. But I also don't want to get to a point in the next year where we have a terrible storm or we have the need for the repair of a police vehicle and a police officer is not in a secure vehicle. Those are things that we really do need to attend to and we don't want to get caught up short. I think if anything, this pandemic has shown us as a country that if we don't prepare ourselves and have our infrastructure to the best that we can afford, we have no one but ourselves to blame when we come up with some very difficult situations. So while I agree and I would, I'm going to strive very hard, Lou, not to spend the 610,000.
That's fine, right? I was just thinking that in fact, there was some wiggle room. That $10,000 wasn't needed. Part of my concern is that engineering costs seem to be pretty expensive. And I know that we're talking about that the additional sidewalk is something like another $100,000 of the 200 and, but I forget what it was, 230,000.
25,000, I think, something on that order.
So, so we're talking close to a 30% cost for the additional sidewalk. And I just think that's pretty expensive. So that's why I had mentioned the reduction there. But if, if we need $30,000 to do the job, I'm not an engineer, so I wouldn't know what, what goes into it. So I'm in, I'm supporting, but the, all of these items are needed. And I understand the, the need for them and I can support all those things. I was just figuring if we could save $10,000, $10,000 is $10,000.
Absolutely.
So the, so let me just jump in. The, the one important reason why we're here tonight, I believe, is, and it's a pretty critical reason is that we need to make the transfer into capital into oh eight for fiscal year 2020 so that we can do these projects. So, I mean, that makes it forward. Capital is the place that we can move forward on those projects outside of that timeframe. So it's important. I think that's why we're here and it's today's date and we need to make those moves. So.
Is there anyone willing to make a motion for either resolution, the one for the 600,000 or the one for the 610,000 as previously?
For the 610, but the question is, do you want to read it or do you just want to make a motion to proceed with the 610? What's the, would we, would we want to read the whole, the whole motion again or? Basically, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed with authorizing the supplemental appropriation at the $610,000 level in order to support the list as presented on the legal notice dated April 15th, 2020, with the exception of instead of $20,000 for the sidewalk reconstruction non-grant, that it read $30,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second to by Rick Shar. Discussion. Do you want me to read the amounts of each item? I'd be happy to do that. For the Board of Education, security upgrades, $46,500. For the Board of Education, heating ventilation and air conditioning upgrades, $60,000. And that is for the second boiler at Valley View School. Grounds maintenance, vent track tractor with attachments, that amount is $46,000. For the Police Department, equipped cruiser replacement, $119,500. And to the best of our understanding, that would be approximately three vehicles. Fire and fire marshal departments, the self-contained breathing apparatus bottle replacement, $5,000. Public Works Highway Salt Shed Facility Improvements, $50,000. Public Works Building Maintenance, replacement of the furnace at company number three, $23,000. Public Works Highway Large Dump Truck Replacement with plow, $230,000. Public Works Highway Sidewalk Reconstruction Non-Grant, $30,000. It's for engineering and inspection costs. The grand total, 610,000. The allocations of these transfers for the general fund are transfers to the capital non-recurring town for $503,500. And increases transfer out to the capital non-recurring for the Board of Education, a total of $106,500. And this would be for Fund Eight, which is the capital non-recurring. I'm sorry? I didn't hear you, Bob.
Oh, that's perfect. Yep. Five oh three. Yep.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That was a very good discussion. Next item on the agenda, I keep this item on the agenda while I don't have anything in particular. It is the dog park, which is something we had discussed previously. And in the event that anyone had any additional information, we'd be happy to entertain that. If there isn't, we'll move on and I'll keep it on the agenda. The proposed land swap with Exchange Club. In the event of both of these projects, because of the COVID-19, we have not, in my office, had too much time to spend on these two. But that doesn't mean they're not still on the list and I will continue to attend to them as time permit. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions this evening? There being none, we'll go on to new business, letter A, number eight, number A. Naming of the Route 17 Recreational Park Complex. I'll turn it over to Deputy for Selectmen, Mr. Zampano.
Yes, so lately it gets very difficult about the park stuff because it seems so insignificant. But we're still trying to make our way through and complete it and things are moving along. And, you know, I think we're still in a position of finish, you know, finish the project in May to finish up with the fitness circuit work. But one of the things that does come into play is that we're getting, and hopefully we're getting a stone, a different stone that we happen to have at the salt shed brought over to be used for the front entrance. And what we'd like to do is to give it official name. And so I had raised this point to the park committee. Jim and I were on a call a couple of weeks ago and I, a few weeks gone, I raised it to the committee to just ask for their feedback, what they thought about the name. I know that it's our role as a Board of Selectmen to officially name it, but I thought I'd ask them for their opinion on the naming. What they came up with at that time was the Portland Recreational Complex. That was the name that was, was raised as being, the, the members of the committee liked that name. We went through a lot of discussions about naming it other than Portland, putting a street involved with it. That gets complicated. We talked about whether it should be a complex or a park. We talked about whether it's recreational or if it's a community. You know, so there was lots of words thrown around, but at the end of the day, what we landed on was Portland Recreational Complex. And the intent of finishing up and coming up with a name is because to read a construction certainly is trying to work through the final things on the list to get done. And one of those would be putting, putting a name on that stone at the beginning of the park. So that's what I asked Susan to put it on the agenda so that we could, you know, we can discuss. We've had discussions within the team, within the committee, talking about is there realistically ways to get names or naming or something like that. I think within the park itself, maybe down the road, we could find the appropriate ways to name the park, whether it's, you know, comes from some sort of donation or whatever. I think from the standpoint of the actual park itself, the general feeling of the committee was to maintain a, the, the general name and look to those other things where we could rename something specific to be contained within the park.
For example, like naming, like naming the field, like you could have a, you know, fields. Yeah.
So I don't know if there's any thoughts about this?
Well, I think the name's appropriate.
Yeah, the, the thinking around the room was the fact that it's, it's not just a sports complex. You know, it's certainly multi-use, more of a complex versus just a, you know, you know, a ball field or, you know, it's, it's a little more, more to it than that, obviously. And the fact that it's, it's multi-use, multi-recreational, so. And then of course funded by the Portland community. So that was, those were the, kind of the discussions of how it all went around with the different permutations to the Portland Recreational Complex.
So we'll, we'll hold out one last minute though. If any of you are thinking that you want to throw in some big number and have it named after you, we could certainly look at it.
Portland Recreational Complex it is.
Do you want to make a motion, Ralph?
Okay, I, I make a motion that we name the new Route 17 Park Facility, the Portland Recreational Complex.
I will second that.
Goodbye, Jim. Discussion? I think it's okay. You always want to go by the initials if it became an acronym. I think PRC. That's okay, right?
Yeah, we, we had some names that would have come out to be problematic. So it's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Number eight, letter B, refunds of excess payments. Jim?
Sure, I, I make a motion that we refund the amount of $465.97 to Cab East LLC.
Second.
Second to by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $397.09 to Nissan Infinity LT.
Second.
Second by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Can I make a motion that we refund the amount of $1,755.24 to Porsche Leasing Limited?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status and committee reports?
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I'd add. Yeah, I guess the only other thing I'd add, if you, if you go by the park, you'll see that they have, they have lined the entire park, all the parking spaces. I know there was times people asked how they were going to line up and how many spaces. I believe it's, if I recall, it's 226 spaces that are contained within the park. So those are all set up. The equipment, I would assume, is still, I haven't heard of any delays. We've had conversations about whether to worry about the equipment being delayed for the fitness circuit, but as far as I know, it's still scheduled to be on its way. And I know they're doing things, I know every time I go by, there's a different change to something they've done on the building. So they're in the end of what has to be done for the building. I did ask Nick with regards to Frontier and finishing off the line so that we can open up Strickland. He said he thought that that could be completed in the next couple of weeks. I won't comment on that because it's gone everywhere. I thought it would have been done by now, so we'll hope that in the next couple of weeks that it can be completed. I did notice today, I think it was yesterday, it looked like they lined Strickland. They actually put the line down the middle of the road in, on Strickland. I saw new lines in the, the stop line, the stop sign lines that are on Strickland right now. So it looked like they, that was a recent add.
So, Ralph, I know that I did call Weston and Sampson and talked a little bit about how they need to really contact either Frontier again because there's the fiber network there, Fiber Net or company that bought them out, that has to get in there first as well. So we want to make sure that they're in the mix. It's not just Frontier. So I'm not sure how that went, so you might want to check with Ryan, because that's really the only thing that needs to be done there to get that transition and get that road open.
I'll, I'll reach out, uh, we, we have a chat window. I'll reach out to both Ryan and Nick and, and ask that question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Hey, Ralph?
Yep.
Got a question. Um, I don't know if you guys have talked about this, or like with the park nearing completion and warmer weather coming, um, but yet we're not really supposed to be gathering in public. Do you, is there a concern about people just going there and trying to use the park and walk around when it's not really maybe officially open, or we don't want people there yet?
Well, I mean, when you look at the park itself, all of the, um, the playground is, like every other playground in town, is wrapped with caution tape to not go onto it. The splash pad, obviously, at some point will become functional, but we probably can control whether it's on or not, would be my guess. And so people are always walking it. I know there was a comment on Facebook about, oh, you could walk, because there was a discussion about can you walk at Rose Hill? And they were like, well, people are walking at the new park. And I'm like, I almost, I just let it be, but there's always people walking the new park. Every time I go by, they're, they're walking it. I, I do get nervous about over time, you know, it's easy with the weather being cooler and not people carrying cold, but when the weather, when it's 70 on a, on a weekend and sunny, it's going to get a whole lot more difficult to keep people out of those. Certainly, as long as the rules are that you can't be on those, you can't be socializing in that manner, it's going to have to stay that way, you know? The door, the gate will remain locked. I mean, the challenge we have is, and frustration we have is, this has been a long process. And now it's frustrating because we're at the very end of it, and in the next month, you're going to look at a situation that you're going to have an opportunity, would have had an opportunity to be able to celebrate the addition to our community. And now it gets extremely complicated. So now what do we do? I know there was an exchange with the group. We did set up groups, two groups, and I think I might have mentioned before, we set up two groups, one to talk about signage at the park, and the other one has to do with, what do we do for ribbon cutting? And there was something mentioned in the exchange today about, well, do we have some sort of a, a walkthrough with media coverage to just say we've officially completed the park, realizing that we really probably have to have some sort of an event later on this year? Because we're certainly not going to be in a position to have a large gathering at the end of May. I would be hard pressed to believe that we're going to turn that around. So, I mean, you're in a situation, I, I, my frustration and my concern is, and I, I made it at the park and rec, and I think I also made it at the park committee, is, my concern is, we're going to complete this park next month. Okay, that's fine, but now, once they hand it over, they're, they're going to consider that they're in a position where they're going to begin the warranty period. Well, if we can't use that splash pad for a year, I don't think I want to have next May come and we never use the splash pad and the warranty is up on it. So I don't know how that, there's some questions that are going to have to be answered with regards to that. I mean, again, the whole park may not, you know, I don't know what kind of usage you're going to be able to do, and they're going to be under warranty and warranty for it to just sit there. So I, I don't know. So that is, well, as obviously a challenge for all of us, for all of our facilities, but it's frustrating because you put in a brand-new facility, and now you don't know how you can utilize it.
It, I will point out, because I've had the question, Rick, can we walk at, at the Route 17 or the Portland Recreational Complex? And I've said, no, this is still a construction zone. It's still under the insurance of the contractor. So my recommendation is we wait until the contractor says it's finished, and we say that the punch list items have been completed before the park, as, as Ralph was pointing out, would be opened up. So right now, people are not supposed to be on that, on that field or on the walking area.
Susan, do you, have you instructed the, our town police to ask people to leave if they're there?
Yes, yes. And at all of our parks, I'll point out, they've had to go several times. That's why we closed the gate at Bransfield Park, and we closed the gate and locked it at Nolan Field, because there were groups of people playing ball games, socializing, and having food among themselves to be social. And that's not something that's allowed under the current COVID-19 guidance. So while folks can walk the track at Bransfield Park, they cannot play ball, and we don't have the parking lot open. I'm sorry that we have to do that, but for the health and welfare of others, we need to do that. Nolan Field, there is no admittance at this time because there is no walking track there, per se. There's just the softball field that's there. Airline Trail is open, and the, certainly the State Forest, the reservoir is open, Riverfront Park is also open, and we've not had any complaints as far as people not following the guidance for the social distancing.
Susan, Michael, I just have a question for Ralph, just a quick one. Ralph, now that you can see the light at the end of the tunnel, um, do you think that this will come in under budget with all the contingencies that you've had to juggle back and forth over the last bunch of months or so?
Yeah, we have a couple, yeah, we have about, we, we hope to have around $7,000, but there are a couple little things we're going to have to figure out how we get them done. So we're, we're going to be close to a number, we won't obviously be over, but we're, we're going to be under.
Nice, very nice.
A lot, it may not be up by a lot, but we will be under.
Let's just say, let's just say we maximized our authorized dollars.
I like that. Fine job.
Any other status or committee reports? Public comment? Kevin?
There's no additional public comment at this time.
No comment at this time. Informal discussion, I have a couple of items, I just wanted to say thank you, particularly to Eversource, and particularly to the Public Works crew for their hard work and, I would say, outstanding performance in the storm that we had this week.
Yep.
You know, not only are we contending and managing the work that's being done on the Aragoni Bridge, we have the COVID-19 emergency pandemic, and then we had this horrendous storm where many of our residents lost power, trees came down, roads were blocked, and electricity, for the most part, was up within 24 to 36 hours, if I'm not mistaken. So thank you, Bob, you did a great job in coordinating that effort, and I want to thank all of our employees for their help in getting that done.
Yeah, they did, you know, it's, it's really hats off to them. They worked alone. We don't do that. We, we usually don't do that. And many, many of them worked alone to clear roads because we're in this situation where they're in their vehicles alone, and they're not working technically as a crew. And many of them were out clearing roads and their routes without a lot of backup. So, you know, taking chances like that is, is something, they did a great job. Yeah, they did. So hats off to them. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, you're welcome. Also, I heard from Sarah Stary Rutter today, and she is coming up with some alternative options and plans for the Memorial Day celebration. Most likely, there will not be the parade in a traditional sense, and she's coming up with some, I think, very respectful ideas for the memory of our veterans, and we will be bringing those to you for your consideration. Most of it will be remote and will be shown on either a Zoom-type situation or a tape so people can see. But there will be on Memorial Day, on that Sunday, a recognition of our veterans.
Good.
Other informal discussion?
Go ahead, Ralph.
I was going to say, um, as I sat there on why the winds were blowing and the rain was pouring, and we had no power for the 11 hours, I asked Bernice what was next, we came to agreement, it's probably locusts.
All right. I was just going to, I was just going to say, keep in mind, Portland counts, right? The census, if people haven't done, and I actually just maybe was thinking about it today, right? It's important for our community, it's important for the state, how we get seats and, and funding. So it took about five minutes, so I figured just a little plug that, uh, for everyone to remember to do that. Easy to forget in these days.
Fill out your census, that's right. Thank you for that reminder. Anything else from the selectmen? Bob, did you have anything to add?
No.
Nope.
Just didn't.
Hey, Bob, is, is everything good at the, at the landfill? Everything good? With transportation, it's okay?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're doing the best we can under these uncertain times. The public is, in general, has been good, and they understand the precautions that we put in place. So, you know, we did open the scale again, that's something important to our residents, as well as our budget, to provide some revenue that is greatly needed. So it seems to be working. We're checking it each and every day. Yesterday, of course, we were out of power, so that created some obstacles for us on how to collect garbage without a compactor. You know, we were busy in the shoe field pretty quickly, so we had to go to an alternative and store it in another container until today where we had power, and then we had to physically reload it ourselves into the compactor. So the guys down there did a great job, and we're back online. So hopefully, everybody will kind of play by the rules and respect the distancing of our employees to keep them safe so that we can allow that facility to run and keep everybody healthy. So yeah, thanks for that question.
How about, um, how about the other item that we discussed previously? Are we go-accepted? People are putting what they're supposed to down, I mean, with the system, they're not putting inappropriate things down this, their toilets?
No, it's, uh, we are unfortunately still in that situation, and our staff is disassembling pumps every day, which is, and like I've said before, which is not a very pleasant task. We are still running into our pumps clogging every day, and we're rotating them through, and we're, we're able to stay ahead of it, but we're still receiving a lot of towels and miscellaneous things in this, in the system that we shouldn't be. What everybody thinks it, and I'm hoping they don't think this, but it's not just our pumps, eventually it'll make it back to your house. So if we fail a pump, it's going to back up very quickly to the closest area and make it up into your laterals and into your homes. So we certainly don't want to do that for everybody's concern. So, and then think about your employees who have to deal with that particular situation, and that is a direct contact for disease, is waste. So, you know, you're putting them at jeopardy too while they're trying to serve our community and make sure that your sewer system works properly, so it doesn't end up in your basement. So please, before you do, flush those items that are not toilet paper, because that's all that's supposed to go in there, please think of them, as well as the potential that it could also harm you and your neighbors and anybody around you. So let's follow guidance. Thank you.
And I want to thank all of our employees for the work that they're doing to provide the necessary essential services in our town. You know, all of our employees are employed, they're working, and they're providing those services, as Bob pointed out, in a very responsible way in terms of social distancing and making certain that they are always keeping things very, very clean. So I do want to applaud all of our employees and the work that they're doing to keep our community safe. Before we adjourn, I wanted to point out to you that our next series of meetings will be dealing with the 2020-2021 budget. And just to repeat, Monday, April 27th, we will meet by Zoom at 7:00, and it'll be a budget workshop. The topics will be Board of Education, Public Works and Other Related Funds, Grounds Maintenance, Parks and Recreation, and Long Range Capital. On Wednesday, May 6th, we will have a public hearing on the proposed budget. On Tuesday, May 19, and Wednesday, May 20, the selectmen will meet in terms of Zoom, and we will have budget deliberations. We will reach, hopefully, a decision on the final budget. And then a week later, on Wednesday, May 27th, will be the formal vote on the budget adoption. I'd urge the selectmen, I know I send you a lot of emails because we get a lot of information from the state, it is important to review some of those items that come through because it does impinge on our ability to make good decisions going forward for our budget for next year. And as always, please contact me or Tom Robinson if you have questions, and we can get you more information. So with that, I don't think there's anything further. I have nothing on follow-up. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jim Tripp, seconded by Rick Shah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Time is 8:48. Good night, everybody. Thank you.